Good evening, everybody. We're going to start the meeting now at 6:33 PM, November 4th.
December.
We just missed a month, I'm so sorry. We all didn't have, there's no December now. December 4th, sorry about that. Twenty-one days till Christmas, or whatever you wish to celebrate. Are you stressing out?
Kathy!
Anyway, I want to remind everyone the city's rules for decorums. All speakers, members of the audience and council members are to conduct themselves with decorum, not to engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the city council meeting. Also, public comment through Zoom will not be allowed until further notice. Public comments will be accepted at the meeting by those physically in attendance at the appropriate time. Right now, tonight, we are very pleased to have, once again, one of our proud veterans, Stephen Poe, U.S. Navy E-4, will conduct the pledge of allegiance for us tonight. Mr. Poe, if you please.
Thank you, sir.
You have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have a second to say something before we begin?
You do what you need to, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, all the council members, city manager, all the department heads. Thank you, all the taxpaying citizens, thank you. Without them, this wouldn't be able to happen. I want to thank all the veterans, past and present. I want to especially thank my VA brothers and sisters. Merry Christmas, everybody, and God bless. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
You can stay there, sir.
One second there, Taylor, one second. Taylor, it is an honor to be in front of you today. It is an honor to be in front of an amazing man who signed that check, a blank check, to the United States and said, "You know, I'm willing to risk my life to defend this country." We, as a city and as a nation, never forget. And as a current service member myself, the discussion that I had with you, we don't forget about those that paid the ultimate sacrifice, our brothers and sisters. And I know you're a Vietnam vet, and God bless you. It was a very challenging time.
Yeah, it was.
It was, but you know what? We don't forget. And as a city, I want to present this to you. And this is City of Laverne Certificate of Recognition presented to Stephen Poe. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council to U.S. Navy veteran Stephen Poe with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to our country. God bless you, sir. God bless your family, and God bless America.
Thank you, Senator.
God bless, everybody.
I had a photo with you to put this in forever. Taylor? You don't want him to go to the meeting?
Three hots on a rack.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Commander wanted to say one, just a small word. Commander Phil?
Yeah, Mike. Thank you. This year, at the end, at the end of this year is a time a lot of veterans are in need. So if you see a veteran, you know a veteran, please help them out. If not, I'm going to leave my cards. I didn't have that many. If you know a veteran, call me, and we can help them out, okay? There's a lot of them out there. We just, I just served 20 bags of groceries to veterans who were in need, okay? Me and my wife got it together. A resident of Laverne, I'm not going to mention his name because he doesn't want no exposure, but he donated $500 worth of grocery gift cards. And we made grocery bags, and we gave them to the veterans in need. So if you know any veteran, please, I'm going to leave my cards up here. If there's not enough, take a picture of it and call me, and I will direct them to the right resource, okay? Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Commander.
Okay, Mayor?
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Poe. Roll call, Mr. Domer.
Thank you, Councilmember Karazki.
Here.
Councilmember Casha Bagueta.
Here, sir.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Lau.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
All present, sir.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we are honored to have Senator Susan Rubio provide a legislative update, after which we are excited to honor two of our outstanding athletic teams, the 2023 Benita High School Boys Water Polo Team and the University of Laverne Women's Volleyball Team. Senator Rubio, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm your state senator Susan Rubio. As a reminder, I just acquired the beautiful city of Laverne this January. So that's why you haven't seen me in the last five years, but I've been a senator for five years. And I wanted to just share with you some of the successes we've had and some of the collaboration. I, you know, I've had the privilege to work with the mayor and your council on several items. So I will try to go quickly. I know we have our students here who may be a little more impatient, but let's see.
There we go.
So in the past five years, I got elected in 2018. I've been able to deliver $130 million to the Sangro Valley. And these are some of the projects that I've been able to fund. I was able to put $36 million in a housing trust, which I created in 2018, that is now one of the largest housing trusts in the city of California. We have funded almost 750 affordable housing units. I'm proud to say that the latest one that we completed was in the city of Pomona, which is specifically for veterans and those experiencing homelessness. So I'm very happy that we're able to provide housing for them. I was able to build a community center, which might, not build, I'm sorry, give $25 million to one of the local cities as well to build a community center. You know, as a teacher, most of you know, as I said, I'm a teacher, so I was able to bring $10 million to support teachers, their learning and their development. I was able to bring $5 million specifically for the Sangro Valley. I know that one of the reasons that that was important to me because we know that after the pandemic, a lot of folks are struggling with workforce. And so one piece is trying to develop a long-term plan for those that are, again, struggling, those that lost their businesses. Most of you know I'm very focused on supporting our small businesses, in particular in communities like these. I was able to put $1 million through the COG, which the mayor chairs now, who he's the president at this time. And $1 million, we were able to collaborate with the city of Pomona, and we created SGB Works, which now takes our youth that is either experiencing homelessness or transitioning out of foster care, then you're training and support. And so that's able to not only provide funding for them to survive, but also leave with the skill and a job. The next thing that I wanted to share with you is, let me see, Phil. You gonna do it? There it is. So I passed 15 bills total. Normally, we don't have a high success rate, but I was able to pass 15. The governor didn't veto any of my bills, but it's too many to explain. But as we move forward, I will share some of the bills that I think, you know, would be important for you to note. I, you know, one of the reasons that I enjoy working locally with my police officers, the police department, or firefighters is, you know, I understand as a former council member myself for 13 years, we know how important public safety is. I work really collaboratively with them, and I'm able to support them in whatever they need. So this year, I brought $1.5 million to law enforcement. Eight cities were able to receive funding, including Laverne. I don't know if you've received the check yet, but you will be receiving.
We're waiting. Can you bring it with you?
Yeah, I was able to provide $200,000 to specifically support our police and make sure that they have equipment that's upgraded. I also was able to collaborate with the University of Laverne, and I just brought them $8.5 million. What we're doing is we're building Satellite College in Ontario. And we know that we want to build the pipeline for the next generation of healthcare workers and mental health workers, especially that we know that that's one of the biggest issues facing our communities with our youth, our seniors, our veterans. There's so much need, and so hopefully, one of the reasons I did with Laverne is that we hope that not only do our students come out with a career, but debt-free because Laverne does a great job of making sure that they pay the tuition. So I'm very proud of that. I was able to deliver $2.5 million also to East Los Angeles Community College, again, very focused on small businesses. And we created the Business Entrepreneurship Center. And what that does is it also helps those that lost their jobs and their businesses during the pandemic, that want to rebuild themselves and perhaps don't have the funding to start their business again. And so that center is going to provide the overhead needed, you know, the support that they need to either get their businesses off the ground, but also for students that don't want to go to a four-year college, that are brilliant innovators and don't have, you know, a way to start their own business. It's also going to help them if they just choose to be creative. And so that's going to pay for everything they need to get their business off the ground. Most of you that have ever heard me, I focus a lot on public safety, but in particular, it's important for me to protect kids from violence, protect victims of domestic violence as well. So this year, I focused a lot on bills that would protect our children and our families. SB 14, which is the first one that you see there, I was really concerned that in the state of California, it was in a serious felony to sell our children for sex, human trafficking. And so I passed export SB 14 in collaboration with one of my colleagues to make sure that we hold perpetrators accountable. So now, in the state of California, it is a serious felony, and it will be some serious consequences. I also wanted to highlight Peaky, SB 331. Peaky, his mom is on the right. She lost her son to, five-year-old son, to her ex-husband. They were separating, and it was due to an error in the court. So the people's law will reform family court to ensure that our children are being placed in a home that's safe for them. In his case, the father had a history of violence, and we knew he had, again, a history, not only a restraining order, but he was dangerous, and they still let him keep Peaky. And that is why he's no longer here with us, but that's going to protect a lot of children. SB 273 will also extend the statute of limitations for victims of domestic violence. In California, victims have three years to come forward. And this bill allowed victims to now have three more years. Currently, it's on the, one of the committees. We're trying to give victims 15 years to heal, to come forward. It's very difficult for someone in that circumstance to decide, you know, when to walk away. So hopefully, they have more time. And SB 1141 also redefines domestic violence. In California and around the world, it used to now be, you had to prove domestic violence by way of a broken bone, a black eye, something physical. So coercive control now changes everything. If someone is withholding basic necessities like food, water, finances, entrapping a person, not allowing them to see their friends and family, now that is a crime. Victims could use that in court. So I will leave it at that. We're working a lot on mental health. You know, we're trying to create 11,000-plus new behavioral health beds and 26,000 health patient treatment slots. But we struggle trying to place those that we find in our communities into a place where they can get help, and so hopefully, this will help. We work a lot with the COG, and I am the chair of the Sangro Valley Caucus. And my job is to make sure that all the communities in the Sangro Valley get their fair shares of routines to transportation funding. So we have a couple of millions coming our way, and we'll continue to push for that. And lastly, I brought $12 million that I gave to the Sangro Mountains to ensure that we focus on climate change resiliency. That was after the Bobcat Fire, that really destroyed our mountains. So we're working on water treatment and water conservation projects. And we're trying to secure $75 million for the Sangro Mountains again to ensure that we clean up our water, our environment, and also building two parks, one in the city of Baldwin Park. I gave them $6 million. One in the city of Laverne, another $6 million. So hopefully, we have more space for our children in our communities. And there's a lot more to share, but I'll leave it at that. If anybody has any questions, you're welcome to reach out to my office. Mayor, thank you. And I want to just say to the mayor and the council, you are always so collaborative with me. The reason we're successful is that we work together, and I hope to continue to collaborate. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Once again, whenever you need me, I'm here. And any questions that you have, I'll step outside if you have to adjust anything with me. Thank you.
I just want to say that Senator Rubio, myself, and also our council, but also with the Sangre Valley Council of Governments, she's a champion. And it's not just for our community, but it's for the community that she serves. I've seen many of higher electeds, but I think that Senator Rubio and her sister Blanco, as an assembly member, are everywhere, all the time. And they really, what they say they're going to do, they do. And I just really appreciate that what you do for our community, but also all of the Sangre Valley and the other communities you serve, you do an amazing job. I don't know how you do it. Do you sleep one hour a night? I'm not sure. But I just want to thank you on behalf of us and our city, but also the other cities that you serve, that we're a much better place for you representing us. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Now, with no further ado. At this time, I want to bring up the coaches for the Benita Schools 2023 Boys Water Polo Team. Coaches, come on up. You can't tell we love sports in Laverne. And that goes to the university, that goes to our high schools. Myself, I had three kids graduate from Benita. I know that Michelle's got a couple. I know Rick's got two. Steve's had two, and...
And I graduated from Benita.
And you graduate? That's us, or he? Yeah. Well, we're still worrying about that one, I'm not sure. The Benita Boys Water Polo Team finished with an overall record of 24 and 12 for the season and placed second on the California playoff team. They advanced to the CIF playoffs, where they had the number one seed. And after four rounds of play, which I heard every single night, thank you, guys, for letting us know what's going on. Sports are very important, what's going on in this community, and we love it. So seed after four rounds of play, they advanced to the championship game, where they won the Division IV CIF championship. They moved on to the CIF state playoffs as the number one seed after two rounds, and advanced to the finals, where they defeated Pacific Palisades and won the school's first, first regional state championship. Congratulations. By Dylan Unsold? That was easy. Dylan Unsold, and assisted by Gage Unsold. I wonder if they're related, I'm not sure. Joe Lamson and Cody Lahosky. Mr. Lahosky's not here tonight. Congratulations, guys. Without you, this wouldn't happen either, but it's that raw talent you got right there sitting down, so. Name a name, come on. We'll give you certificates. Here we go. Coach!
Thanks, all the parents came out. So I'm just going to call you guys up. Want to call your name, just come and stand up here. First, we have number one, Julian Falk. Number 10, Gary Watson. Number 14, Maverick Mathis. 1A, Braden Jimenez. Number two, Max Distasso. Number three, Parker Montgomery. Number five, Jake Carlson. Number six, Matthew Humper. Number eight, Jackson Dinson. That's my bad. Messed up the order, sorry. Number 12, Jeffrey Heaton. Number 16, Shane Ibarra. And number 15, John Carlos Garcia. And last but not least, 11, Dylan Vegas. Um, yes, I believe, yes, that is everybody. I know we were missing one athlete, so he couldn't make it. But, um, yes, thank you again, council members. Appreciate having us here. Oh, shoot. Those guys are all here. Jackson, Max, Shane.
All right, we're going to squeeze in the middle? Come on, guys, come on in.
Yeah, boys, that's what I'm getting at.
Come on, get the professional.
Yeah, I want you to do like three rows.
Someone there that's got a bag.
Grandpa, you're going to have to come way down because I can't see the top. Perfect. All right, can everybody tuck down just a little bit? Tuck down, tuck down, tuck down.
We're supposed to stand up taller?
There you go. And don't move yet.
Two rings.
Okay? Good?
Hey, now, just the guy.
Wait, 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 stand, stand.
He knows how to take photos. Hold on, hold on. Guys, stay there, I just want you guys, just the team, the coaches. I tried water polo for like 20 minutes and almost died. Last week? Parents, where are the parents at? Where are the parents at? Come on up, parents. Come on up. Come on, come on. Don't be shy. There you go. Come on, come on, get in there. Come on, come on. You know, none of you are shy when you're running them all in there, like you tell them to hurry up and get to practice.
Congratulations. Hey, I think the water polo team should thank the parents because they were there in every single game. They gave you energy, they gave you the coaches' clothing.
Good job, guys, good job.
Congratulations again. Okay. Okay. A final presentation, the University of Laverne Women's Volleyball Team. The Leopards finished the season with a 25-5 overall record and a 13-3 record in the Southern California United Allegiant Athletic Conference. Hello? The Leopards had a lot of points in the NCAA tournament and won their first two games to advance to the Sweet 16, where they finished as the regional runners-up. The team advanced further and won more games than any team since 2009. Four Leopards were named all SCIAC, and three were named all region. Freshman Malaya Capistrano was named the Region 10 Freshman of the Year and an All-American Honorable Mention. Sophomore Maya Ray was tabbed SCIAC Offensive Athlete of the Year and First Team All-American. The Leopards were led by the SCIAC Coaching Staff of the Year, head coach Jeff Hendershot, and assistant coach Randy Taylor-Tumei. Mario, Lisa, and Jeff Corby, coaches. Come on up. You're not going to, you're going to come on up with us. I'm going to give it to you. You can announce.
Did we give you the player list?
Did we give you the player list? You'd have before.
Alright, when you guys hear your names, you wanna come on up? Nalani Young. Ayana Mir. Kylie McGarry, who is not with us tonight. Madison Smith. Isabella Walsh. Zaki Costa. Sidney Humphrey. Kelly Young, who's not here with us tonight. Kailin Katina. Lexi Giacobi. Kailin Blumer. Nalani Sama. Cece Flaherty. Malia Capistrano. Julia Thomas. Maya Ray. Lauren Gott. Isabella Gueros. And Hope Finney.
Picture time, let's go, we gotta wrap it all the way around the room. Come on, let's get a girl picture, girls. Come on! Okay, you ready? No, not yet? Holly, come on!
They're doing it, they're doing it!
Get lost, Holly, come on.
Sorry. No, you're fine. Your photos.
Parents, anybody wanna take a picture? The parents are here, I see a cup on there, wanna take a picture?
One more big round of applause.
Again, you guys, please thank your parents too. Tuition, you know, those things that make this thing tick. Have a great time. Thank you very much, congratulations. Okay, we're gonna do a five-minute recess, then we'll ever even get out of here, and who's wanna stay for the, I know you wanna stay for this exciting meeting, but I think you have other places to go, plus In-N-Out's open. Thank you, everybody, congratulations! We adjourn at seven thirteen PM. Now we move on to announcements of upcoming community events, I'd like to call up, let's see. Sherri Best.
Wow, we've really had such an exciting evening. Sherri Best, President of the Laverne Historical Society, and all the fun and entertainment and merriment of the month of December is not over, because on the sixteenth, the Laverne Historical Society is having its annual Vintage Sale, and baked goods sales, and home tours. So this year, we are touring two historic homes. One was the home of Mr. Edmond Connery, and in front of his home will be parked the truck, which is running! Thank God! Yes, I'm so glad that's happening. So, the truck will be out and about, running around Laverne this week, getting, uh, broken in, so to speak. And then it's gonna be parked in front of Edmond's house. So come visit that, and then come visit also the Samuel Overholzer House. Not the elder Samuel Overholzer, but his son, the other Samuel Overholzer. You can learn all about that family and tour that home. We'll be selling all kinds of goodies, vintage goodies, baked goodies, and inspired by the Great British Baking Show, I am making mini cheesecakes with pomegranate, key lime, pie cheesecakes, and lemon curd cheesecakes. So how can you resist that?
You didn't bring any for us to test?
I did not.
You're just teasing us?
You're gonna, I'm just teasing you, you will have to come over on the sixteenth and enjoy all of this largess, it will be a great time. We are collaborating with the Friends of the Library. They are joining us in having, uh, selling book bags. So you can conveniently buy a book bag, and you can stash all your vintage and your baked goods in there. It'll be easy for you to, uh, total your, your stash home. We also have the Hillcrest Woodworkers Group joining us, and so they will also be there. So, the event is happening around the Coons Park Square. We're gonna be in five different locations, and you'll simply need to look for the balloons. They will be, uh, tied in front of the various locations for you to show up. So you could buy your ticket for the home tour, help out the city, uh, by shopping locally, and help out the Historical Society as we move forward. Wind down the old year and get ready for the new year, so. We'll see you there. The event is from noon until five PM. The last home tour will start at four thirty. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sherri, appreciate that. Anybody else have any announcements? Avon Gallegos, and then you're next.
Good evening, everybody. Alright, thank you, I just have a quick announcement. I do want, I wanted to say that, um, for the Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion Committee, the CAFI committee, um, we have changed our meeting days. Um, so our meeting days are now on the first Tuesdays of every month, as opposed to, um, the first Wednesday. So, our first, uh, well, our meeting for December will be, um, held tomorrow, same place. Uh, so, uh, excuse me. So just room in Hillcrest, uh, same time, five PM. Uh, but again, the change was made to, um, insert some, you know, other, uh, you know, meetings that were happening, uh, specifically within, uh, the school district, um, and other commitments that people had. So, again, our CAFI meetings are now the first Tuesdays of every month, five PM, at the situs room at Hillcrest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and yeah, anybody's welcome to come tomorrow. Uh, we'll have some special guests from the USC, and then, um, also from the University of Laverne.
Thank you, Avon, appreciate it. Ms. Bocham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to thank the residents of Laverne and outside cities who helped fulfill the number of wreaths for wreaths across America that will be placed on the veterans' headstones here at the Laverne Cemetery. Everybody stepped up in the last hour, and we actually exceeded the number that we needed, so I wanted to thank everyone. But that's only half the work. The other half is actually placing the wreaths on the headstones, and that will be Saturday, December sixteenth. Um, I suggest people get there early, 'cause parking on B Street gets tough. Um, but they will have a small service with the veterans from VFW, and then they will give you, um, instructions as to how to do it. There's a salute, you name, you say the name of the decedent, and then place the wreath on there. And it's, um, well, for me, I have a lot of past, uh, family that's military, but even if you don't, it's a very moving ceremony. I suggest everybody do it at least once in their life. Uh, it's a way of giving back, especially to our local community here. So, uh, just briefly, to know that across the United States, at that very moment, veterans are being honored all across the nation and even abroad. So, it is a big deal, so I ask and encourage the residents to participate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
Nine, yes, nine AM, sorry.
I just wanna tailor on to that one, I do appreciate, I know that Cynthia Gavodon had, I talked to Joe Gavodon, her husband, it was the day, the day before, and it closed, I think it was on the twenty-eighth or...
Yeah.
And, um, they were still shy, um, quite a few, a hundred and seventy, if I'm not mistaken, but Cynthia was able to get a hundred, plus a hundred and eight, a hundred and seven, to, uh, and then it was just a matter of thirty or forty to finish, and, uh, and everybody did it, and I really appreciate that, 'cause it is, it is very important to celebrate our veterans, and it, it's a pretty really cool time to go out there and have the Girl Scouts and all of the different people, and just know that across the United States, this is happening. It's, it's pretty amazing to celebrate our veterans. So, thank you to Cynthia Gavodon, Joe Gavodon, Ms. Bocham, and for all those that did participate. It was seventeen dollars, plus a few dollars extra just for the fees, but, uh, we exceeded it, which is, which is incredible. So, next year, we'll make sure we start early, and so we can start, don't have to hit that, uh, you know, that rush. Do we have any other announcements from anyone else in the... Mr. Johnson?
Uh, Laverne Church of the Brethren is having their Christmas concert Sunday, uh, December tenth, at four PM, and everybody is welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Brosby?
And it's all about holiday music. Uh, we have the Benita Chamber Singers that sang before us this mo, uh, this afternoon, uh, before the meeting. They are tomorrow at the Methodist Church. And then they are on Saturday, Yuletide, at the BCA, um, at two PM and seven PM. And then we have the University of Laverne Chamber Singers on December tenth at four PM in the Morgan Auditorium.
What time is it at the Methodist Church tomorrow?
Seven.
Seven. Seven, when my wife tells me I have to go.
PM. Nine AM. PM, yeah, thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mayor, just a friendly reminder, Spark of Love, we're still taking donations to, to our community members here. Uh, it's, those amazing boxes are available here, City Hall, and at the Fire Department, in our Public Safety Building there, so please don't forget that. And I wanna thank Crazy Bear Cycles, who, uh, really is gonna do it again this year. We're gonna be able to go donate some more bikes, so be able, and down there, kind of go help build the bikes, and, uh, be able to give them...
Are we still gonna pass it out at Hillcrest, like we did before?
We're still gonna pass it out at Hillcrest, that's still the plan, and hopefully we can get some more bikes donated. Get some bikes, and we always do every year.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And Winter Wonderland.
That's this Saturday.
This Saturday. From nine AM to one PM at Heritage Parks.
Which is amazing, we're gonna have a fun time. And it'll be nice to know, it's gonna be cool that day, so it's snowing last winter, very good. Mayor, put them out.
Yes, so, um, two things. Tomorrow, if anyone is available, from ten to four PM, there is a blood drive happening at the University of Laverne. And I know I say this a lot, but there is a shortage of blood, and it is really necessary, so if you are available, uh, able and willing, uh, anytime between ten and four tomorrow at the university. Um, also, Tri-City Mental Health has a slew of events happening this month, um, at their Wellness Center, so I urge folks to take advantage of that resource. Um, I've said it before, but, you know, the holidays can be a really fun time, but it can also be a very stressful time for people. And so really, taking care of your mental health and taking care of yourself is really important. So one of the upcoming events they have is Movie Night at the Wellness Center this Friday evening, from six to seven thirty, and they'll be screening How the Grinch Stole Christmas.
Thank you, Councilwoman Love. Um, I just wanna remind everybody that on our website, we have, uh, many, many things going on this month of December, so please pay attention to our website. At the back of the agenda packet, there's also information of the upcomings, uh, of what's going on in our community, which is incredible. We did the holiday stroll this weekend, we had the tree lighting in Monroe Square, they have the Canine Fendoshan Dinner. Uh, and I also wanna thank all of the staff, the police, fire, public works, Community Services Department. If you haven't noticed, our buildings are decorated for Christmas, and I really appreciate that. Mr. Domer and staff, I think the residents really love it, to have lighting on our buildings, to have, um, the Public Safety Buildings decorated with all sorts of great stuff. There's deer, there's arches, and they had a big defrauding ceremony on Saturday, so, kudos to all of you. I think it's important that, you know, this is, this is one of those Christmases. I think it's wonderful that we're celebrating it, and I really do appreciate for our management, all the way to our directors, that it was a fun day. Councilmember Johnson and I were able to come out and help put some of the brand-new decorations together. Thank you so much, Chief. Yeah, yeah, both Chiefs, but anyway, just don't...
I was gonna say, uh, and appreciate the council support and all that stuff. I know that, uh, this is a great season, and the staff are appreciative of coming into a place where it is decorated like that. And if the residents love that, they're gonna love the fact that the Laverne Link mobile application is available for download. Uh, that's, you go to the Google Store or to the Apple Store, there's already been over three hundred downloads of the Laverne Link mobile application. It's your easy way to connect with the city. You can take a picture of graffiti, it will know where it's at, you can submit it. Um, and so it's just an easy way to submit potholes, other requests, it goes directly into our work order system. So, go to your Apple Store or Google Store, if you have an Android, and search for Laverne Link. It is your mobile app, and it gets you council information, calendar issues, um, and a direct connect to the city, so.
Let's go. Councilmember Johnson's, uh, kinda chewing on me, because he said, "Did you load the app?", he said, "No."
We're shaming him.
Everybody else has, they uploaded on their phones.
We all have.
Now, you guys were also in the flyer in the mail.
Dinner now.
Yes, uh, whatever, that's fine. You guys were sent in the mail, Santa's route, and a tracker, Santa's tracker, but also on that Santa's tracker, there were some other functions that are going on, so. As we've all stated, we don't communicate enough, and I think we're really starting to get that out. We're, uh, anything that's going on in our city, it's very important that you all pay attention to websites. Download them on your phone, which I haven't done yet, which I will do tonight, 'cause I don't wanna get shamed anymore. Has an update, the board meeting for the Public Finance Authority Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District is Wednesday, December thirteenth, at nine AM. This meeting was confirmed after posting of the council agenda, and therefore is not listed on the last page of the upcoming events. With no further announcements, we will move on to consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are routinely enacted by one motion, unless a member of the city council or members of the audience request separate discussion. Council, any request to pull an item from the consent calendar? May I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second?
I'll second.
Vote please.
The consent calendar was approved by all.
Thank you very much. Other matters, we will now move on to other matters. Uh, we have two items tonight. The first matter is the Legislative Platform for the 2024 Legislative Session. City Manager Domer, please call for the staff member who will be reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to call for Andrea Lockinger to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, oh, okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and city staff. This evening, I will be presenting on the proposed 2024 Legislative Platform. Throughout this presentation, I will discuss what is a Legislative Platform, why it's important, and how it will be utilized here at the City of Laverne. So a Legislative Platform is a document that contains a comprehensive list of the city's priorities and stances on various issues that are related to legislative matters. Um, this document is used as a point of reference for city staff and legislative advocates when we are reviewing legislative bills that are proposed, and responding effectively to these matters on behalf of the city. A Legislative Platform is extremely important, especially with the rapidly evolving legislature. Every year, thousands of bills are proposed, and we wanna make sure that we have this platform as a point of reference to concentrate our efforts, so that we are effectively monitoring bills that most impact the city, and we can effectively respond to these bills. Adopting a Legislative Platform will also ensure that the City of Laverne can effectively respond to the rapidly changing legislature and the various bills they propose. Currently, without a legislative platform, any position letter that we want to write, either in support or opposition of a bill that's proposed, must be presented to City Council at a City Council meeting for approval before it can be sent to the legislature. As there's public hearings constantly and bills are flying through the legislature, we want to make sure we can effectively respond to these instead of waiting for one of the two City Council meetings that we host on a monthly basis. So with the adoption of a legislative platform, we will be able to streamline our advocacy by creating letters that are signed by the mayor and sent on behalf of the city without needing to go before a City Council meeting for approval. But of course, there are some bills that are of dire importance that we want to raise public awareness on or they're controversial in nature. We will still bring those to the City Council for discussion, for approval before it is signed and then sent to the legislature. So we will do a mix of both options. Additionally, one of the benefits of adopting a legislative platform is that it instills a culture of proactive monitoring and ensures that we are aware of any new laws that are adopted that impact city governance. So these measures ensure that the city is proactive instead of reactive to new laws that are adopted and makes us more resilient in the long run. One example of this is Assembly Bill 1572. And that identified that potable water that is used to irrigate non-functional turf will no longer be allowed by municipalities effective January 1st, 2027. This bill is an unfunded mandate from the state down to us that we have to create vast changes to our irrigation systems or change our landscaping practices. But as we are monitoring this bill and we are aware of it, we can start to look for funding opportunities and change our practices. That way, we are ready by that January 1st deadline of 2027. So this is just one example of the various bills that are adopted every year into law that shape how we function. So we want to make sure that we are actively aware of those bills and can effectively respond once they are adopted. Okay, so the City of Laverne's platform was developed in partnership with a team from Townsend Public Affairs. We partner with them for grant and legislative affairs and their expertise played a vital role in developing this platform. We also have a representative from Townsend Public Affairs on the phone to answer any questions at this time throughout this presentation. The platform was then reviewed by the directors of every city department here to ensure that they provided their insights and expertise so that the platform is an accurate reflection of the needs of the city right now and what we may need in the future as well. The way that the legislative platform is organized is within three sections. The first section is the purpose. It generally defines why we develop a platform and its intent behind it. The following section is our guiding principles. These are the overarching goals that the city is constantly striving to maintain and keep. Those are preserving local control, promoting fiscal stability, and supporting funding opportunities. Now, these guiding principles shape all the position statements that are listed throughout the legislative platform. The position statements throughout the platform are broken down by topic area so that they're easy to navigate and the statements are left intentionally broad. And that's to ensure that the legislative platform can encompass numerous legislative matters while also keeping the document brief so that city staff and advocates can easily navigate that document throughout the year. During this time, we will not go line by line throughout that platform. So please review and if you have any questions, we can discuss them at the end of this presentation as well. Upon adoption, a few things will happen with this legislative platform. First, it is a very public document. It does express all of the values here at the city and what we're striving for. So we want to make sure that it's easy for anyone to access on the city website. So it'll reside within the city manager's section of the city website. And the platform will be there along with any position letters that we create throughout the year and send to the legislature. Over time, they'll be organized by year, so any resident can go to that page and see the history of our advocacy efforts. And all legislative platforms will reside on that page as well. Additionally, as this is regarding legislative affairs, we will be sending this to all of our elected officials. That way, they can be aware of the city's needs and can effectively advocate what we want from them as well. On, excuse me, internally, city staff and the legislative advocates will review proposed bills throughout the legislative session and will track the bills just to make sure that we're aware of how they evolve throughout the year. And if they're proposed into law, that way we can immediately report staff of what we need to do when the new laws go into effect. Additionally, there are certain bills that we do want to make sure that we make our positions clear. So we will be drafting letters of support or opposition or request amendments and send those to the legislature throughout the year. Again, those will reside on the website for anyone to see. Additionally, the legislative platform is an ongoing, evolving document. So we want to make sure every year, we review this document before the next legislative session. So come fall of 2020. Come fall of 2020.
Just a quick change while we're doing this, entertain.
You're doing amazing, just continue.
Okay.
Can you start over?
I respectfully decline to start.
You got it.
So every fall, we will bring this platform before the council again to review it to make sure that it continues to meet the city's needs and also reflects any new changes that the legislature proposes on an annual basis. So every fall, it will come before the council for approval, so that way it's ready for the next legislative session. With that in mind, I have key dates of the upcoming legislative session for everyone to see. First, January 3rd is when the legislative session reconvenes and hence why we're bringing it before you now just to make sure we have ample time to review this document and have it ready come next year. May 24th is the last day for each house to introduce bills in their respective house, AKA the House of Reps and the Senate. And then we'll go to both sides from there. June 15th is when the budget bill adoption deadline is. August 1st is the last day for each house to pass bills. And September 30th is the last day for the governor to sign or veto any bills. And of course, throughout these dates, there are many more deadlines that we're going to be constantly tracking when our public hearings occurring because there are many throughout every month and we want to make sure that we're sending position statements throughout those deadlines as well. Here we go. And so for this evening, our recommendation is to approve the 2024 legislative platform. And then our alternative recommendation is to direct, to direct staff for further direction. And if you have any comments, we can go ahead and implement them and then bring it forward to council at a later city council meeting.
Is it done? And with that, Mr. Mayor, we leave it open to the city council for discussion.
I think we want to open up public comment first. Andrea, beautiful job, thank you very much. Open up the public comment, do you have any public comment on this item? Mr. Bochamp.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and Council. I would ask if this council seriously consider pumping the brakes on this because if you stop and think about it, you're pretty much just laying down and accepting whatever the county, the state, and the federal government is going to dish out. And, and then as a taxpayer, I'm going to ask myself, why are you here? What, what job is it that you're doing if we're going to just follow whatever it is that they're going to set forth? There is some very dangerous verbiage in this legislative package. I don't know if people actually took the time to read that, but you know, the packet was pretty hefty this time around. But I'm going to focus on the most obvious and the most controversial, which is the CCWs. As all of you know, there is a lawsuit against the city pertaining to that because of the excessive fees and the unconstitutional type of valuation that you are requiring. You know, we just had that shooting in San Dimas a week ago. German in his own garage shot to death. And you're taking that away from the people to protect themselves. But there is a whole section in here about fire reform. And I just think that it's just something that people need to kind of understand before you just say, yeah, City of Laverne is just going to abide by whatever dangerous things are signed into law. I mean, look at all the executive orders that Governor Newsom signed when he was abusing his power under a state of emergency for the pandemic, which many of that may still be nullified because of that lawsuit. I just, you know, you voted as a council to go against, you know, the cities, and join the lawsuit with the other cities at the county level for what they voted on. And it's like, you're going to take that away. You're going to just go ahead and accept whatever it is that they're dishing out. And I just think that is a very, very dangerous thing that you are this close to agreeing to. And you're taking away, it's another, it's, it's like district voting all over again. We're not even going to have a say because if you agree to this, the, the staff's, when the laws are passed and you, the staff's going to do the work and say, okay, well, we approve it. And then it's going to be in the consent calendar, it's not even going to be open for discussion. And unless somebody like Rick Bowen or myself contacts city manager and requests it to be pulled, it, it just flies under the radar. It, it's just disheartening to see that, you know, we made progress and then all of a sudden you slap us at the end of the year with this. This is, this is heavy duty stuff. I really wish you guys would table it, discuss it a little bit further, maybe have a steady session for people on this side of the fence to understand it a little bit better and what it is that you, if you choose to approve it, what that really means for the residents of Laverne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bochamp.
Good evening. I wasn't planning to be here tonight for a personal reason, but I came because I got wind of the platform being published. And I, I very quickly read through it today. And there was a couple of things that jumped out at me. One, I think if you recall, about three years ago, I suggested that we do something like this for the city because I was wondering why so many of these big issues were coming up and there wasn't really the conversation going on about how do we get there? How do we get to having this kind of like intense environment over some of those, those issues in the past? And I think of the 80, I think, items that are listed in here, I could probably go through probably a third of them if I was given the time with an opportunity to kind of be like generally supportive of, of the whole, but a little, you know, ask some questions about the language in there. You, the use of words like vital, what is the definition of vital? There's a lot of things in there, is my point. But I also recall that I was told a while back that politics didn't matter in this city. That your political affiliation did not matter in this city. Didn't matter when you ran for city council, didn't matter, right? This reeks of matter. In particular, I'll say it, I'm a Republican, okay? And I think I'm the only one in the room or on the dais that's, that's, that is maybe Republican from the standpoint of somebody who ran for city council was told that that didn't matter. But in here, in Townsend's report, it calls out Republicans in a negative connotation. And every other person named in that document by Townsend is a Democrat that basically vouches for their initiatives, their agenda, and what is they, their proponents of. And if Laverne is going to get itself involved in a legislative platform, I think the rest of the city and the community should be aware of what's going on, what this means and who it is that we're taking these, these guidelines from. Because while I, like I said, I generally agree with the majority of it, some of it I don't. And some of it talks to things that we need to fix, but it doesn't talk to the issues that cause those issues that need to be fixed. So if we're really going to be open and fair and get along in the city, then one, I don't think that politics should come into play ever. I think that we should be honest and open about that. I don't think we should be calling out one preference of political affiliation over another in a document posed by the city. And I think generally speaking, you know, I think I do a lot in the city for the benefit of the city with no benefit to me really, you know, individually. I don't look for the accolades, I don't look for, you know, anything from anybody. I'm not employed by the city, I'm not employed by anybody in the city. My family does things for the city. But when I see something like this, I go, what is the city doing for, for my family and for families like me without having to call them out? So I just want to make that point tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavodon.
His reference is page 43 of the packet. It specifically states Republicans under the firearm reform.
And he did not call out any Democrats.
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that a little bit. The legislative platform are the first.
Forty-three, thirty-eight.
Yeah, page 33 to 38, it's the 80 items. I believe what Mr. Gavodon is referring to is Townsend provides us at the end of the year, a legislative wrap-up. So they go over all the legislation that has gone through during the year 2023, what's been signed, what's going to be effective as of January 1st. And that's where that information is. The reality is, is that state government is controlled by the Democratic Party. And so against a lot of the bills that have been signed into law, majority of them, I believe, are from Democratic legislators. So it's not part of our platform. The platform is, if you read it, I think it is very fiscally conservative and very flexible and politically neutral. Anything that the council wants to debate at the council dies itself. We would bring on an open meeting for discussion to get public input. So the last thing I ever want to do is send a letter of support on something that I don't believe the city council would support. So anything that we believe is, you know, has a political notion to it, has controversy to it or anything like that. First of all, as part of the process, we always check with the mayor to say, Mayor, would you be okay signing this? The platform gives us a little bit better parameters in which to determine what to bring to the city council. So it is designed to be flexible, but it is apolitically from our standpoint because we're going to be looking at, there's over 3,000 bills that are introduced every year. And there's a lot of garbage, but there's some good things, but there's also some things that, from our perspective, even though we're 32,000 people, we need to put our comments into it and seek amendments or just tell people that we're opposed to that, that's going to hurt us.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other public comment on this item? Yes, sir. Mr. Bernard.
I just got a short thing to go with. The train's coming through at four o'clock.
We're, this is a different subject that'll be on public.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I got your card, you're ready to go.
It sounded like a train.
If you mind, you staged that, I'm sorry. Any other public comments on this item here? We'll go ahead and close public comment and we're going to bring up the dais. I, I just, and I appreciate the comments, both of you, on this item. This is actually for us to bring forward, for us to review any bills that would affect our city in any way. And I want to also put in there also, Andrea, you did a great job. But also is the fact that you're on the city steering, the city manager steering committee, correct?
Yes, I am in those meetings, yes.
And I think it's very important to know that the COG, San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, they review these bills, whether it be a Republican or Democrat. The problem, the problem is a lot of these bills, as we know, especially with housing and rapid rehousing, they affect how we live. So I think it's more review and also review with our community. When anything comes forward on these bills, we'll also utilize the COG because we go through these, the same issue as we said last time, Mr. Bochamp, that we're going to bring those forward and bring more information to the community so we can look at these things as a whole and a body, as, as a community, how this is going to affect us. And I, and I appreciate your clarification, but I think this is moving forward to understand that we all get these bills and all of a sudden they're passed and there's really no say. Now, the COG does do opposition letters and sometimes it does make a difference. But I think as a city as us, we want to make sure we're aligned with the other cities in the San Gabriel Valley. As a hammer of one, it's not enough. It has to be a hammer of many to say, this is unfair. Because a lot of these bills that we've all seen, there is no financial stability whatsoever for our cities. And it makes it very difficult for us, the pot of the water alone, we're talking tens of millions of dollars for a new infrastructure. We, we're, we can't do that, there's just no way. And so that's a perfect example. Then you bring all the housing issues up, but I think what we're doing is stepping into the next level being, let's be transparent. Let's discuss these as a body, discuss this as a city. But I also want to make sure we bring in the COG to do that too, because we're doing the same thing. And we want to make sure that we're aligned with other cities that affect their communities just like ours. So I think that's probably what we're going to do when, once we review this and, and, and put this into effect. Am I not correct, Pastor Domer? Okay. Mr. Crosby.
I, I agree. I spoke with city manager Domer yesterday and Mayor Hepburn today after reading this. This is a hefty document and it is, there's a lot I agree with, with, with majority. But I want to. want to make sure that this document has been out to our public and that we are reviewing it. So I would move today after, to table it till the next meeting, so, and then vote on it at the next meeting, just so that it is out there and many more people get the chance to be able to read it and comment on it and if we do need to make changes to it.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Ms. Morello.
I would also agree with that position because I do think, because this is new for our city and we haven't seen it, you know, to Mr. Galvedon's point, this is something that has been referred to in the past but has not been implemented. I think to alleviate confusion and to try to make sure that people understand what it is, that it is allowed to sit out there and we need to drive, you know, social media traffic and information out there so people can actually read it and understand the difference between what our recommended platform might be versus what Townsend's report is. Because I think there is maybe some, you know, confusing the two. So maybe an FAQ, if you would be so kind, frankly, prepare an FAQ that would address some of those issues that we could put up on the website so that we can have those answers easily available for our residents so that we can vote on this at our next December meeting. Because I do wanna be respectful of the fact that since the legislature opens back up January 3rd, I wanna make sure that we have this ready to go.
Thank you. Mayor Proton. Johnson.
I mean, you just answered my question as far as the urgency. But do we, I mean, to get one more two-week period during the middle of the holidays is not giving residents really time to digest this because I hope they have better things to do. But that's my only concern, that if we would postpone this couple of months, that would be plenty of time. Postpone it to the next council meeting, I don't know that that gives it enough time.
Does that, that be a problem with January? Mr. Domer?
We'll be at the meeting on January 15th. We could take it up then. Again, so there's gonna be a lot of introductions of legislation, a lot of legislation that is introduced at that time are, you know, shell pieces of legislation that don't get much to them based on the legislative process. So I'm comfortable with bringing it back on the 15th instead of December 18th, so continue it till that time.
Well, I would move to bring it back on the 18th, but then bring it back on the 15th, just so we have more discussion.
More discussion on it. So we can bring it back on the 18th and then we can maybe make a final decision at our January meeting, 2024.
Yeah. So January 15th is a Monday, it's Martin Luther King Day, so the meeting will be January 16th on that Tuesday. So what we'll do is bring it back as an other matter. We'll continue it to the December 18th meeting if that is the direction of council. And at that time, the recommended action will be continue it to the meeting of January 16th, at which time final action could be taken. And at that point, hopefully there's enough interaction, we'll get the website up and running and we can have a button on there to solicit comments about the legislative platform too. Excellent.
Ms. More Cash, you go with that?
Yeah, absolutely with that. I think it gave the time for everybody to kinda read this and just get a better understanding of it and transparency that it offers. And I mean, I think it's a good thing to give people opportunity in our community to be a part of this legislative platform, you know, get their input on some of the things, you know, it's not just one-sided or whatever. So I'm good with that.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, originally we were looking at doing a study session on it, but we kinda ran out of time this year. So this fulfills that purpose of introducing it, having it kind of out there in the public entity longer than the normal time and then getting some further direction and then finally bringing it back in January.
And I don't wanna be unreasonable, but is it unreasonable to ask for an FAQ before the end of the year?
Oh, no, yeah. We will, I'm getting a head nod from Andrea that, yes, she will work on that.
I do wanna comment on Mr. Galvedon's comment. No matter if you're a Republican, a Democrat, or an independent, when a bill stinks, it stinks. And we have to pay, that's what we're doing right now, is to make sure that it affects, whatever affects our community, which it has tremendously. I know that Scott Wiener has put out a bunch of bills that are just crippling our cities as far as SEQA and rapid rehousing. And we need to have to be very, very aware of what's going on. So this is our next step and I really appreciate this, but, and I appreciate the comments. We wanna make sure that we get a chance to digest this, to move forward with it. So do we need a vote on this to...
Yeah, do we need a vote to continue it to December?
Then I would like a motion to continue. December 18th.
I would like to continue this matter till the next, to the December 18th, council meeting.
I'll second.
Vote please.
That motion was approved by all.
Thank you very much. Good discussion. Thank you for the comments and the audience, I appreciate it. We move on to the second matter, regional communications center update. Mr. Domer, please call for the staff member who will be reporting. Andrea, great job, by the way. Thank you.
That was her first presentation and I wanna do...
She rocked it.
She did rock it. And now, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna follow up to that. Somebody on his 27th presentation and he better well get it written right.
Acting Chief Gonzalez. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Councilmember, State Staff. Because of the holiday festive spirit, the round of key my presentation, short, but it is to formally communicate to council our progress and our quest to regionalize our communications center. With that said, as outlined in the report before you, attorneys from LCW are reviewing MLUs, they're reviewing all the information to form a JPA. So that is a wind in the right direction, so like I said, in the holiday spirit, we're moving in the right direction in hopes of achieving all the benefits that are outlined within the report. We are continuing to struggle with personnel and staffing levels and we feel that regionalization will address that, those needs at that given moment. The location has been designated in the city Covina to put the regional center and it's off of Grand in between the Dillow and, I think it goes down. The location has been, oh, 957 North Grand, between the Dillow and Covina Boulevard, has been designated for the location, so all that's being prepared by attorneys. And lastly, we'll be bringing back any new information as it progresses, any presentations in the near future, but this simply formalizes it. With that said, we are asking that you receive and file this report. That'd be short.
You, you're comfortable with this? You think this is the right direction for us to move in?
A hundred percent. There's actually agencies peeking through the window, open, 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 because they wanna jump. So it could get bigger, as big as we want, so with the city manager's leadership and some of the other city managers, we're all looking at that possibility.
Our employees that are currently staffing, will they be given opportunities to transition to that center?
Oh, absolutely.
Excellent. Excellent. Very good. I think we will open up public comment right now, sir. Any public comment? We're gonna break that mic, yes. We're gonna open the public comment, anybody who wants to speak on that, Ms. Bocham.
I would agree with Acting Chief Gonzalez. People don't understand what is involved when you're doing 911 dispatch. I did for a short time for Allie County Fire Department. And when you've got a life and death situation, you've got somebody completely hysterical on the other end and you're trying to give CPR instructions or get their location so that you can send out personnel, it's a big deal. And so to have the backup, to have enough staff so that, you know, people aren't going home completely a hundred percent stressed out is very, very important. So I agree with him that this is something that the city needs to do. With that said, I know the holidays are busy times as council member, or Mayor Proton, I'm sorry, spoke of earlier, tricity mental health. It can also be a very stressful time for people. And so unfortunately, I had somebody who, somebody I know and I'm friends with who called because we're told by this council, by the police department, if you see something, say something. She called the police department, the non-emergency number, and she was treated very poorly. So I was very disappointed to hear that because my experiences with the police department have always been positive, so. But that's a testament to not having enough staff and, you know, you're taking a non-emergency call over a 911 and you don't have enough people. So this is the direction we need to go. So I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Any other comments on this item? We'll close public comment. I'm really glad to see this happen. I wanna say that our dispatch staff has been stellar. The unfortunate part is just the workload is too much and the burnout rate's too much. And I think that moving in this direction is going to serve us better, it's gonna serve our community better. Also, it's gonna have opportunities for employees that are doing it currently to maybe be in a safer environment where they can actually function without being stressed all the time. And I know it's been a stress for our police department because they've been filling in and it's been very difficult and I understand it. When I first got on council, this was an issue. It continues to be an issue. Glad that we're choosing a path to go in the right direction, first of all, for our employees that are there currently and also for our residents, for our safety, and also for the safety of our personnel to have a good dispatch center that works well and it's staffed correctly, so. Council comments?
A few years ago, we did this with fire and I was very nervous about moving over that transition to make sure that our residents were kept safe. It's been proven to work. About a year and a half ago, I did a ride along and got to go and see everything that happened of the police and what LVPD does. Went up and spoke to dispatchers and what they do. And it's one of the most difficult jobs to fill. We've had to work with other cities already, with Covina and Monrovia through our MRUs that we have done. And this, and asking for this to really move forward and look at this, this is the next step. What this is gonna do is gonna help make sure that we have able dispatchers all the time for our residents and it's gonna only improve our calls and how we dispatch our Laverne Police Department. So really appreciate Acting Chief Gonzalez in moving forward with this and can't wait to the next steps to see the reality of this. And I really do see other cities that have their own police department really merging together and making a regional effort. And we already with our Laverne PD have so many regional, working with our partner cities, with our SWATs, with our canines going out. And many, many helps when we have small city departments, we need to call on our next-door neighbors and friends and this will just help and support that too. So appreciate this and looking forward when it comes to first.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crosby. Councilwoman Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. I always appreciate, you know, our community events that we have and it's great to see everybody's in the holiday spirit and...
Do you have any other comments?
Well, I think that's great. I was gonna get to it. So thank you. Thank you.
We weren't sure if you was gonna go on the other side.
Yeah.
He's ready to go.
It's a long day. No, I was really, the regional items, oh, yeah, it's like that. I was trying to go on the... No, I think a lot of stuff, but I've reached on it. You know, I've been law enforcement long enough to understand that communication is the key for everything and it's really tough for those that are in the dispatch, that are dispatchers themselves because they don't really get to see the end of what incident that happened. They're just hearing sometimes the chaos that's going on and trying to direct traffic and direct staff and to get people to the help that they need in time of now. So it's really, really stressful and it's really emotional in a lot of cases. So whatever we can do to better our community, better our city and those that are around us, I'm all for it. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cash. Councilwoman Johnson.
Chief, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. I support you a hundred percent.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Mayor Proton, love.
I would just like to echo the comments that have been made both by our residents and our esteemed colleagues on the dais.
You, Cash.
Yeah. I think this has been a long time coming and I think it'll be helpful and I think to Ms. Bocham's point, it is a really hard job and you can't do it effectively for very long without burning yourself out if we don't have adequate staff. So thank you.
Again, that's a lot of hard work too. I know it takes a lot to put together, but let's make it happen. Let's look forward and it can happen. With that, we need a motion to either file the regional communications center update. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept and file.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote please.
And that was approved by all.
We move on to public comments. This is the time where the audience, public comments. We, anyone wishing to address city council items, I'll list on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, I wanna remind everyone that the Brown Act prohibits the city council from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or place for discussion on later date. There's a three-minute time limit in the public comments, which we, whatever. At this time, wishing to make public comments, I do have one card from Mr. Bernard. It is your turn, sir. How are you?
Good night, or good evening.
Good night.
I just wanna talk about everybody's alarm clock at four o'clock in the morning. It's just getting too wild because those guys are laying on the horn from Sandy and St. Anne Boulevard all the way to White Street. And some of those people have kids and all that and it's just not, you know, it's not fair, so. Whatever anybody can do or whatever, just have them tone their horns down because they can do that. I worked on the railroad, so I know how to trim it, you know, I can, but I don't wanna do that.
Thank you. City manager knows, he's listening to it right now. Thank you. See what we can do.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else on public comment? Britt.
Hey, I just wanted to remind everybody that this, from what the city manager said, that this is the final week for anybody that wants to run for city council, to submit their paperwork. Hopefully, we do have people that come in and run for districts two and district five. I look forward to a good debate for people that wanna run. I did go ahead and post out because I didn't hear that anybody was going, but don't worry. Based on what I put out on Neighborhood, we had 1,700 people that were actually looking at my posts. That's not including what we were looking at on Facebook. So I don't know if they weren't looking at the Laverne website, but it seemed like there was a strong interest. So let's see if we got some people out there that are gonna be working. But if I'd have known a week or two earlier, I would have posted it earlier so we would have had more people out there for a challenge. But hopefully we get some people out that wanna run and if we hadn't district, man, I'd have been up there. So I look forward. And again, this is the final week. So hopefully people go out, get their paperwork in and run and hopefully it's a good challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Any other public comment? Mr. Galvedon. Please. You have the floor.
I really haven't thought about doing this, but the mayor and council. I think it's wonderful, all of the celebrating that the city does and decorating and the festive feeling and it's a great hometown feeling. I'm part of it. But I'm also part of Diversity and Inclusion Committee and Cultural Fairness Committee. And I just kept looking at this tonight and it says Christmas tree lighting. And I think we need to be a little more sensitive about all of the people in our community that maybe are not celebrating Christmas but are celebrating their holy days. And almost all of them have gifts involved, so, you know, shopping Laverne is always great. But it just, you know, we just kinda need to watch our language and maybe try harder to say, you know, holiday celebration, have happy holidays, you know? It just kind of caught my eye and I know it's been something that I've had to learn to change my vocabulary a little bit so I'm more inclusive. So I just wanted to...
Thank you very much. Mr. Galvedon.
Real quickly, I wanted to reiterate that I had been...
More quickly, I wanted to reiterate that I 100% support the legislative platform and I really do appreciate the effort of Andrea and the other staff for their hard work to put it together. It was more of some of the composition of the elements that were presented that kind of got my attention. Regarding some of the things that I just, you know, like things that I've been noticing, one is, I was wondering, is there an ordinance, maybe this is the city manager, regarding parking lot lights that are out in the areas around the vacated buildings and retail spaces in the city? I happened to go to the Von's Gas Station there night, or actually, I went to Baja Grill, then to the gas station, and I noticed that the 911 set store parking lot was super duper dark. And I know that area already has a little bit of an issue with people kind of like hanging out along with the Rite Aid area there. So I'd hope that there's something we could do about that for the public safety at large for folks just walking around. And then on that note, I happened to be at Wells Fargo the other day and I know that there's a gentleman or two that hang out in that area that are perhaps homeless, I'm not really certain. But I will say that there's something the city can do to, you know, keep people away from the ATM in particular when people are trying to do banking transactions with cash deposits and everything else. It's a little bit unnerving. I'm not really worried about it for myself, but I think for some of the other folks that I see standing in line, you know, that can be something, you know, we should think about. Also, I've noticed recently, and maybe it's the economy, maybe it's other things, I don't know, but we seem to have folks that are enjoying use of the general residential areas perhaps along White and Wheeler, putting their cars for sale. And it's not just one or two and it's not just once in a while. It seems to be like a thing now. I do know that in my district, that some of the folks that live along Wheeler have complained about the, you know, cars for sale that get parked there along their home areas and nobody is doing anything about it. So maybe you guys can think about something we could do, whether it's red striping or whatever. That would be great. And then the last thing is Councilman Johnson, in support of your initiative to get us an at-large mayor, I would suggest that similar to the holiday event flyer that we all received, that the next time we have the opportunity to communicate with the community about these big things, that we spend the money to do things for that as well. That was brought up during district voting scenarios, outcomes, education, but we didn't do it then, even though it was asked for. I'd ask that you support something like that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Galvano. Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Good evening again. I have two things. First, I do want, I wanted to say about Cassie having our cultural festival last Saturday. I really appreciate the councilmembers that came out to support us. We really liked the format and how it went, you know, always looking to bigger and better. It was our first attempt to have this type of cultural fair, so we, you know, really want to do it again next year, so we're going to start planning on that and planning a little bit earlier so that we can get a lot more of, you know, the city involved. So I appreciate everybody who came out and it was a lovely time and I even learned a lot myself. Second thing was I did at the last city council meeting bring up a letter or a statement that the city of San Dimas had issued and brought that to your attention regarding, you know, a statement of against hate and I just, I know that you all took that into consideration. I just wanted to follow up on that and see if it was something that we are still considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaygos. Anyone else wishing on public comment? We're going to close public comment, bring it up to the deas council comments. Mayor Pro Tem, love.
So thank you, Mayor. So we recently had our, I'll let Councilmember Crosby talk more about it, but we recently had our YFAC meeting and so just wanted to let people know that there will not be a YFAC meeting this month and that we're continuing to January, but we are looking for obviously community input and feedback into what goes on in our city, especially as it affects our youth. So if that is something that you're interested in, please check the end of your, of the agenda as it does announce when the next meetings will be. But the next one is January JR twenty--
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. So just wanted to announce that really quickly. The other thing I just wanted to talk about this past Saturday was the beginning of all things holiday-driven throughout the city and I know there's tons more coming. So I did want to acknowledge the decorating. I did see the mayor briefly in the morning, but I was doing the 5K for the University of Laverne, so he did get to come over--
And he ran.
I did run. I ran, I ran. But he did get to come over and meet a couple of students, so they were excited to meet the mayor. He went to take a picture with them.
No, that's your, that's your thing.
But it was nice to see the community get together and our public safety folks get together to decorate. I am very thankful that no one was hurt. I'm glad that we were all safe because some of you scared me a little. But thank you for doing that and beautifying our city. Also, as Yvonne Gaygos mentioned, the Cassie group did hold a cultural celebration on Saturday as well in conjunction with one of the leadership classes from the University of Laverne. It was, a large part of it was student-driven, so it was really exciting to see students get engaged. They got to learn a little bit more about city government and how things are run and how, who they needed to contact in order to hold events. So it was really nice to see members of the community come together. There was free food and music and spoken word and it was really nice. And so I think hopefully, next year, we'll see it get bigger and hopefully, people will come around. It was right before holiday stroll, so we were hoping that we would see some cross-traffic between the two events. But just for your edification, hopefully, we'll see some more of that holiday celebration and learning about each other in the coming years. And then the last thing I was going to say is, since I think Rick did this for me, Rick's birthday--
What?
--is this Friday.
This Friday?
He shares a birthday with my dad.
Oh.
Just wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Rick.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Rick. Happy birthday to you.
Councilmember Crosby, you're up.
Yeah, you're up. Thank you. Payback from before. Thanks. We did have our YFAC meeting. The tri-city gave an excellent presentation about their program and I know all about study sessions and stuff, but I think when availability sometime in the future, they come out and do a study session so that's taped for all of our residents to see about the programs that they have. Our police are looking for explorers and there are open applications too, so please, if you are, the age is, sir, I think it's sixteen?
Yes.
Sixteen. And it's on their website, so if we have anybody that wants to, they don't have to be wanting to go into law enforcement. It does a lot of great communication skills and it just really shows what our police force does, so we're looking forward to explorers out there. And we talked about all of the city that was happening this week with Benita and ULB and the Church of the Brethren that's happening, so please go out and see all those. And we have Hanukkah starting this Thursday evening, so happy holidays for all those who participate.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby, and a happy birthday, yeah, soon. Councilwoman Cash?
All right, here we go. Okay, now I can go.
Drumroll.
Thank you. Here we go. And this Saturday, our fire explorers are going to start kicking off their first day one, or normally we call it day zero, so now they can start after that. But hey, it's the first day, so I look forward to seeing all the amazing new fire candidates out there, just giving back to the community and learning a great and amazing profession. I was a police explorer right here in this city many years ago and it's a great opportunity. And, you know--
Well, I turned out like a thing.
Got a few more years left.
Let's talk about it later.
We'll talk about it later. Statute of limitations ended and all that. Thank you.
Just never know with me.
They keep extending the statutes of limitation.
Yes, they do. You heard Senator Rubio.
That's awesome. And so this Friday, I will also be attending the San Gabriel Valley Disguise and Controlling Board, so I'm part of that. As if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, please feel free to reach out to email me. Anything that can, I'll get back to you after Friday's meeting. If you have any burning desire to ask, any questions of those of us there, as I represent this great city. And then next week, I'll be going to Assemblymember Holden's having his toy and shoe drive to support the San Gabriel Valley. So I'm a big supporter of the communities and helping out those fortunate. So that is all. Happy birthday and I look forward to seeing everybody next city council meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cash. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Tim. I really am enjoying this app that I don't have. But I would say and ask the city to include information regarding the upcoming election. There's nothing on here on that in my section, part of it. But it is a great tool to see what's coming up. There are a couple of, or there's one e-waste collection coming up at Bracket Airport on the sixteenth. So that's close enough for all of us to get to. Please take advantage of things like that. But it's nice to see this in the app and it's easy to report graffiti, just take a picture of it, give a location. And it's in the works. It's new and we're improving it all the time, but I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just update, yes, Mr. Crosby?
Just so that city manager don't work it, this Friday, when the nomination papers are due, the city will be open for those that have full papers.
Correct, yes. Please give us a call beforehand. We will have staff here. The doors to City Hall are locked, but we'll have posted information on the front doors.
That's for the eighth, correct?
Yeah, for the eighth, yeah. Because the final is 5:00 PM, first date law. But, you know, what we do ask is it takes some explaining, both when you pull the papers because of all the state requirements and all that--
Make it early.
And then, yes, because we also have to validate the voters.
Perfect. Thank you. San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, we had our meeting this month. We just had our board meeting. A lot of things moving forward, as we talked about our legislative caucus, we're bringing more information back to the city on that, our San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, which you saw that Senator Rubio had donated tremendously to that. It's been very successful. We also had the insurance commissioner and we posted that on our website regarding fire insurance and how it's affecting our communities and what optioned out. There was also a webinar which I posted last week. There's a webinar on that about how to get insurance and reassurance and what you can do. Also, there was a meeting, we had Caltrans come to our COG meeting regarding the shape of our highways and our on-ramps and off-ramps and to communicate with our staff in the city and also our residents that we need to clean it up. And as I don't know if you've noticed, but Caltrans has been out pretty much in force. They're always cleaning up the freeways, they are cleaning up encampments, but just more for us to get out to all of our cities and say, hey, Caltrans, do your job, clean up our areas, make sure you clean up the homeless situation. So more to follow on that as, as Ms. Bocham had stated, we're starting to crank now, things are starting to move and more information to our community on what's functioning, what's not functioning, who to contact if there's an issue, so we move forward with that. My wife and I and my two sons and two daughter-in-laws were at Alan Weinroth's wedding yesterday. So our canine handler Officer Weinroth, Mary Rachel, Ryan Harvey at the Green Hotel in Pasadena, congratulations to them both. It was an amazing wedding and it was, a lot of the police force was there. The sad reality is they're all looking around going, God, these guys look familiar. They're all dressed up in suits and I'm going, I'm a police officer in Laverne, oh my goodness. And they behaved themselves and they looked great. They were with their wives and girlfriends, but congratulations to Officer Weinroth and his family. It was a wonderful occasion and happy holidays to all and spend your money in Laverne. I guess that's really what it's about. But most importantly, be with your families and friends. Those people you haven't seen, contact them. Simple phone call, simple message, a meal. Make the time. It's important. A lot of people need it out there, so. But that, our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, December 18th at 5:30 PM, where I have a study session. As a reminder, upcoming events and meetings are posted on the last page of the city council agenda and please remember that the PFA, the IFD meeting is on December 13th at 9:00 AM here at City Hall. And thank you for all and we adjourn at 8:24 PM. She comes to meetings.
You're a font of knowledge.
Comes to three meetings and now she's--